Good evening. Tonight's meeting of Monroe Township Board of Education is now in session. I'd ask everyone to please rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands on our nation indivisible, liberate, and just for all.
I got no hands on.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Turella?
Here.
Mr. Mayo? Mr. Mayo? She muted?
Where is she?
Record that as a no for the time being.
Now, Mr. Gorski, Mr. Mayo is here. She did say here, but she was muted.
Okay, very good. Record that as present. Thank you. Mrs. Cole Penwich?
Here.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Here.
Mr. Pelori? Mr. Ryback? Ms. Siegel?
Here.
Tufano?
Here.
And Mr. Rutzke?
Here.
Mr. Board President, you have a quorum present this evening.
Terrific.
And I have a new statement to announce at this meeting, which is different than previous due to a statutory change. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted November 11th, 2020 at all schools, on the district website at HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW.MONRO.K12.NJ.us backslash at the home news Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the clerk of the municipality. Instructions for making a public comment have changed. Please pay attention. To make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature and lower it when you're finished. When you are called on to speak during public forum, your microphone status will be set to unmute. Please do not attempt to unmute yourself as this may cause your microphone to stay muted. When called upon, you will be given the option to share your device's camera with the rest of the panelists and attendees during your speaking time. If you choose to do this, simply click the video camera icon. After you are unmuted, please state your name and address. For the record, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to four minutes duration or less in accordance with Board Bylaw 0167. After you are finished speaking, you will be muted and your permission to share your camera will be disabled. Please turn off the raised hand feature. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gorski. Okay, we now can move to approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the Public Board of Education minutes of October 14th, 2020.
So moved.
Who moved it?
Hey.
Peter, okay, and second?
Joe.
Okay, thank you. Was there any question or comment? Before we vote? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or recusals? Okay, that motion passes. I'd like a motion to approve the closed session meeting of October 14th, 2020.
So moved, Steve. It's Andy.
Second.
Second was Peter. Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, we can vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
There was some... Who opposed? I thought I heard...
Oh, I... Said yes.
Oh, okay.
I did not oppose. I said yes.
Okay, okay. So any abstentions or recusals? No, motion passes.
Mr. Ryback, am I correct that there were no abstentions or recusals on the closing?
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Okay. And now we have a board district goals action plan presentation. I will doing the boards. Dr. Alvek will be doing the districts. Elliot, can we put up the first slide, please?
Certainly, I'll share that now.
We can go to the next page. Okay. This is the board goals for 2021. The first board goal is to continue to support the strategic plan and the district's efforts through the pandemic. The second is to continue to evaluate and adopt the plan for enrollment growth and facility needs. In parentheses, we have the italicized words. The board discussed investigating alternative actions, which may be to address building renovations versus a full referendum. And the third goal is to continue professional development for board members and achieve board certification through New Jersey School Board Association's Academy Program 2021. Boardsmanship training to be included with this goal to improve effectiveness of the board. It's a two-year goal. Now, if we go to the next slide, we go into a little bit more involvement in each goal. Thank you, Elliot. Under major activities, this is the goal to support the strategic plan. Board members are invited to attend the Strategic Action Plan Meeting. We had two very, very well-attended meetings and very well-run meetings. With not just board members, community members, administrators, teachers. It was very, very inclusive. And the third meeting wasn't possible because of COVID. I think that's still going to happen. But we do have some indicators of success. One was the strategic plan attendance and the plan that was created. And then we had four main goals, which emerged from a lot of activity from a common themes identified by the large group. Everybody was identifying common themes. And these were the four that mainly most people saw as a common thread between everything. One was facilities and finance to include further developing relationships in Trenton regarding school. Two, educational excellence to include 21st century skills, student empowerment, hiring and retaining highly qualified staff. Three, health and wellness. Four, community engagement to include partnerships, collaboration with community colleges and businesses, collaboration with stakeholders. Elliot, can I have the next slide, please?
Mr. Ryback? Ms. Michelle Arminio, can you go back to that slide?
The first one?
Yeah, this one. On number one, facilities and finance, I think I had made several requests in the facilities and finance to include training and board member meetings regarding the budget and, you know, with our business administrator, I made it very clear that that was the type of finance goal that we were seeking. To actually have board members delve into, look, we have $130 million operating budget. And I said it on more than one occasion, and I was assured that that would be included in our goals.
Well, Ms. Arminio, that is included in goal three. This is just the strategic action plan outcomes, and we'll have the third strategic action planning meeting once COVID is done. And then there will be an action plan for each of these goals created for the strategic action plan. But for the board goal number three, where we talked about professional development, the finance piece is included in there.
All right, then I'll reserve my comment. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to add, I know all my years on the board, I know Mr. Gorski always avails himself to questions from board members about the development of the budget and finance. And I know he's always offered to do workshops for any board members that might be interested. And I'm sure that hasn't changed. But what Dr. Alvek said is absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on to board goal two. Thank you for the question, Ms. Arminio. Continue to evaluate and adopt the plan for enrollment growth and facility needs. Board discussed investigating alternative actions, which may be to address building renovations versus a full referendum. This is something that the next board obviously is going to have to be dealing with. Identifying those facility needs, that was done. Jerry Take did a fantastic job in researching all of this and presenting us with a list of the facility needs. If we want to get, we need to update the demographers report. A lot has changed with the developments. And, you know, if the board sees fit to delve into a new referendum, you need the most updated numbers. And then eventually come up with a referendum plan, which estimate the spring of 2021. Any questions on this? Okay, we can move to the third goal then. And this is professional development to achieve board certification with New Jersey School Boards. We identified some professional development topics, and they're on the right side. I'll just read them. I don't know if you could see them all. Boardsmanship, board roles and budget development, ethics, conflict resolution, 12 common mistakes, communications, board oversight and appraisal, board roles and finance. And I guess the board will work with Mary Ann Friedman, New Jersey School Boards, to develop a schedule, which is number two on this page, so that you can take advantage of all these workshops. Any questions on this? Okay, Dr. Alvek, I believe it's all yours now.
Okay, so then the three district goals that we identified and were approved by the board, the first one is a continuation of last year's goal because we did not finalize the strategic action plan, since we could not have the third meeting. So it's finalizing, engaging the school community and development of a strategic plan for the Monroe Township School District. District goal number two is to develop a referendum project by working with the community using the latest enrollment projections to address student growth. And then district goal number three, revise as necessary and execute the Monroe Township School District Restart and Recovery Plan for the 2021 school year. This will include meeting all health and safety requirements in the New Jersey DOE Roadback Document, assessing all students and addressing learning needs, and incorporating social emotional practices to support students, staff, and families. Next, I, Mr. Feldman? So some of the action steps here are similar to what we had last year for the strategic action plan. So one of the things that through the strategic action plan is working to revise our current district's vision and mission statement. So that was part of our first meeting that we had with the community for our strategic action plan process. We are working with New Jersey School Boards Association to continue that process. We had the first two meetings. One was held in January, one was held in February. And there will be a third and final meeting once we're able to come back together. And then, once that is done with the community input, then the next steps are for the administrative team to develop specific steps for each goal. And as Mr. Ryback already shared with you, there were four major themes that came out of the first two meetings. And from there, the group, the community group, the third strategic action plan, will identify some specific action steps. And then the administrative team will create that action plan for those goals. And then there will be regular updates of the strategic action plan. Remember, this is not a one-year plan. This is a plan that's going to take us into the future. So we're looking at three to five-year plan. So we will continue that. Mr. Feldman? All right, step number two, as Mr. Ryback mentioned, this is in support of the board goal also is looking and working together to identify what is going to be our next steps. I think this is going to be a really important discussion when the new board takes their seats in January, of where are we going to go? I know there's been a lot of discussion through our Buildings and Grounds group and the finance committees, and really taking a look at what does the board want as their focus? Do we want to look at a referendum that includes facility needs? Or do we want to look at a referendum project for new schools? And/or a combination of both, which would be what I would recommend, and to move forward with that. So that's where this, you know, COVID is not going to last forever. We know that. So we're going to need to work on this and move forward with our plan for our enrollment because the students are going to come back to us. Mr. Feldman? And then the final one is the restart and recovery plan. So this has been an ongoing process, obviously, since March. A lot of work has gone into our plan. We've worked with different groups, administrators, the teachers, our custodians, all of our staff. Also looking at our restart and recovery committees. We have a district restart and recovery committee. We also have school restart committees. And looking at our plan, everything is constantly under revision because different things are changing all the time. And then also following all of our protocols for when we have a positive case. And I'm going to share more information during my superintendent's report about where we are right now. And then also continuing the education for all of our students, whether we're on hybrid or remote. So continuing to do professional development, the grade level meetings, teachers working together in collaboration with administration to identify curriculum and where we're going with all of those. So those are the action plans for the goals, and there will be regular updates throughout the year, just as Mrs. Friedman recommended when we approved the goals a couple months ago. Any questions? Okay, this presentation will be posted tomorrow. I did see a typo or two, so I want to make sure I correct those and get those corrected before they get posted.
Thank you, Dr. Alvek.
Thank you.
We can move on to committee reports. What I'm going to do is I'll start with ad advocacy, then move to BGNT, policy, finance, and personnel if they have anything. Mr. Kyle Ponowitz has anything to report. All right, Mr. Pelori, let's start with you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. The Education Advocacy Committee met on November 10th at 6 o'clock virtually. There are a couple items of discussion. First and foremost, I just want to express my sincere disappointment that the legislative meeting that was scheduled, that I worked towards for a good three and a half months, has gone in vain. And I'm not thrilled about that, but unfortunately, those are the times that we're working with. But nevertheless, there are a couple other points that we discussed about the letters and responses that we were looking for from the developers. And Mr. Ryback updated that the committee did send the letters out and that the township was not willing to sign those letters. And the letters were sent to JSM, K. Hovnanian, Lennar, and Toll Brothers. And Mr. Ryback reported that none of the developers responded yet. Due to the lack of response, Mr. Ryback revised the letter and read it to the committee. And I think he would like to send that revised letter out. Steve, is that something that you want to read at the board meeting to get an approval, or you already sent it?
I intend doing that on my president's...
The president's report? Okay.
But one correction, the township, it's not that the township wasn't willing to sign the letter. It's legally, they were not allowed to sign. They were advised against it.
That's right. That's correct. I stand corrected. Thank you very much. And the second item we discussed was about the corporate sponsorships and advertising on the school property. I think we had a second reading. Maybe, Dory, you can tread some light on it for the general public as well to see that that's now active. And if anybody can bring any kind of resources in this dire state situation that our school district is in, that'll be greatly appreciated.
There were several policies that were approved recently that had to do with donations, corporate sponsorships. I'm forgetting the other one, but there was another one. Mr. Gorski, do you remember the other one?
Building use policy?
Use of building.
Use of building. Thank you. So we are using those, and we're looking for all possibilities for getting revenue into our district through those.
Okay, thank you. And the last item was that there was a legislation where the Governor Murphy created an infrastructure bank. And we requested Mr. Gorski to look into it to see if there's any possibility of getting any of the low-interest or no-interest kind of investment to make some of the capital improvements that we're looking at our school, some of the schools. So that was something that Mr. Gorski is continuing to look at. Mike?
Yes, we're getting some preliminary information from the county, from our associations, from materials from the state. We want to make sure that everything reconciles before we present it. It appears that the majority of the funds are targeted toward trade schools and colleges and universities. But there could be an attachment that the school district could do through Rutgers. And Lori McConnell, our grant supervisor, is also helping with that.
Well, I think we're looking at two separate things, Mike. I think one is the infrastructure bank. Another one is something that popped up late last week with the governor allocating about $80 million towards technology improvements at schools. So I think we're investigating both of them to see if there's any possibility of getting additional funding. So, yeah, that ends my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pelori. Now we can move on to BGNT. Mr. Tufano?
BGNT met on November 11th. The first item on the agenda was the Eagle Scout Project by a district student, Nish Patel. He presented his proposed Eagle Scout Project to the committee, where he would like to refurbish the garden at Apple Goff Elementary School. The committee asked questions, which, you know, Mr. Patel satisfied all the answers to us. The committee asked questions basically like who's going to maintain it, what exactly he was going to do. He's going to be putting a water feature in there. He's going to be cleaning up the Parris Power Washing Room, straining out some of the stepping stones, replacing some mulch. So the committee approved this project. Some of the board members offered him help, being tools, assistants, if he needed it. Any, Mr. Pelori offered him some plantings. And I wish him luck. It's a great accomplishment to become an Eagle Scout. Then we had the presentation of the NJSIG Safety Grant, checking overview of the new playground installation at Mill Lake School. Mr. Gorski and Mr. Feldman presented the New Jersey School Insurance Group Safety Grant Award Check and outside grant in the amount of $42,948.39. Mr. Gorski and Mr. Feldman provided a pictorial presentation of the new playground installed at Mill Lake School. The Safety Award Committee members asked specific questions about the materials and expressed their appreciation for the grant funds. That playground is actually a beautiful thing. It's beautiful, well-crafted, and looks very safe for the kids to play on and was much needed. And then the last thing on the agenda was the overview of the school reopening and preparations. What I'll have now is either Mr. Gorski or maybe Dory want to give some details on that. They'd be better informed of that than I was. So whoever wants to do it, Gorski or...
Mr. Tufano, I have the list that was presented to the Building Grounds committee. So, Dory, if you'd like, I'd be happy to read it.
Yep, that's fine.
Or if you wanted to start, I could come in later. It's up to you.
Go ahead. You start.
Okay. What was presented to the committee was that facility staff have been onsite working, preparing the schools since the beginning of the pandemic in early April. Prior to returning to work after a week of quarantine, facility staff received an in-depth training on cleaning procedures and safety precautions, PPE requirements, et cetera, prepared by Dr. Richard Lynch, who was the district's certified industrial hygienist of environmental safety management. All staff received this in-service training prior to returning to the buildings and were outfitted with prescribed PPE and cleaning supplies immediately. Through funding provided by the CARES Act grant, the facilities department arranged for cleaning of HVAC ductwork at the schools in accordance with the National Air Duct Cleaning Association, MADCA. Facility staff work with the MADCA certified contractor to complete duct cleaning and preventative maintenance, servicing all HVAC equipment throughout the district. All HVAC filters were changed at this time, albeit the conventional ones that we had before. In addition to capital improvement projects and standard summer cleaning program, facility staff continued with facility upgrade projects throughout the district. Facility staff work with the building principals, designing signage and social distancing markers that were installed throughout the districts and school buildings. Plexiglass barriers to prevent the spread of airborne particulates have been installed throughout office spaces and classrooms throughout the district. In the classroom, the discussion focused that it was mainly the front desk to create a barrier between the teacher and the front row of students. This work remains ongoing and has been directed by the Reopening Task Force Guidelines. The Reopening Task Force was a very productive committee that was created by Dr. Alvek and Dr. Lehman. As requested by the Reopening Task Force and MTEA, replacement HVAC filters with a rating of MERV 13 were ordered for all district HVAC units. The filters were received and installed, and the work was ongoing. That's what was reported to the committee. Subsequent to that, we learned that from the 1,942 filters that are required to replace all of the existing filters in all of our school systems, we were slightly short at the high school. And we had difficulty spreading the order to the schools because it was not broken out as ordered on the purchase order. It was just dumped. And we had repetitive orders in some schools. And there was about 40, if I recall correctly, filters missing at the high school, which would have caused a couple of classrooms to be short. We are aggressively seeking those filters still, and we'll report back when we have success. Realizing the need for increased fresh air ventilation in classrooms and following a directive of the Reopening Task Force, every operable window in every building in the district was tested for proper operation. And countless maintenance work orders were completed to make sure that every teacher could open windows in his or her classroom with ease. Windows at the schools that no longer contain screens were outfitted with new window screens to prevent insect infiltration while windows were open. Again, following the directive of the Reopening Task Force, over 20 exterior tents were ordered and installed by the facilities departments. The tents will be used for screening and nebulizer stations at the schools. And finally, facility staff work with school administrators for purchasing and placement of PPE supplies, such as hand sanitizer stations throughout every building, glove dispensers, disinfecting wipes, et cetera. And those are being stationed throughout all schools as directed by the local school administration. And we have plenty of the Brew Tab solution, which we are creating our own wipes. And we have plenty of that material to go around.
Mr. Gorski, we're not creating our own wipes now. We're utilizing wipes that we were able to purchase.
Were we using the Brew Tab solution where we had shorts?
That was the original plan, but we were able to get wipes, so we're not using that. So just to kind of follow up on that, a lot of information was shared with parents over the last several weeks before we opened on Monday for our K-8 students and self-contained students. So we did share information about the wipes. There was a training video for all staff, teachers, building staff, and students on how to wipe down desks using those wipes. Gloves were made available also. We also have, all of our buses were trained, so I know that there was a brief discussion about the buses at BGNT. All of our bus staff is trained, so every bus is cleaned and disinfected in between routes. And then we did welcome back our students on Monday. So we do have our pre-K to 8 students and our self-contained students at the high school back in the buildings. It was great to see them. The students were excited to be there. The teachers were excited to see the students. I visited almost all the schools so far this week just to see how everything is going, and everybody's doing a great job. So, and again, I'll share a little bit more during the superintendent's report with kind of where we are with that.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Tufano? Thank you, Dr. Alvek and Mr. Gorski.
Yeah, that's it for our meeting, Steve.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. President, may I ask a question? This is Andy Pelori.
Sure, Andy.
Dory, if you're going to be, Dr. Alvek, if you're going to be discussing about how things are going with the school opening over the last three days now, then you don't need to answer the question. But generally speaking, how is it going? But more importantly, the question is, in case of another emergency, like the spikes that we're seeing, do we have a protocol in place if we need to follow that protocol?
The protocol would be to go back to remote learning.
So on the day that it's notified, the teachers know exactly what to do with the students?
They would go back, right? Well, there would be communication, obviously, if we had to do that. If there was a specific school, a specific class, or if we had to do it as a district. It's an ongoing process. Everyone's hearing the news and what's happening, so we're monitoring it on a daily basis.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I guess we can move on to policy. Mrs. Siegel?
Good evening, everyone. The Policy Committee met Wednesday, November 11th, and we reviewed several policies and regulations. The first one we reviewed was Bylaw 0164.6, Remote The first one we reviewed was by law 0164.6, Remote Public Board Meeting During a Declared Emergency. And just to share a summary of this, the Director of the Division of Local Government Services promulgated emergency regulations, which establish standard protocols for remote public meetings during a governor-declared emergency. The board's new bylaw 0164.6 is in compliance with these new regulations. The board's Policy Service Strauss Esme has recommended that the board adopt bylaw 0164.6 with one reading. Policy 1620 Administrative Employment Contracts to revise policy. The policy has been revised in response to a recent appellate court case. The court overturned a Commissioner of Education decision regarding the public notice and hearing requirements for an administrative contract that is rescinded or terminated by the board before it is due to expire and the parties agree to new employment terms. In addition, the policy guide 1620 has been revised to reflect PL 2019, Chapter 169, which among other issues abolished the superintendent's salary caps and made several revisions related to abolishing the salary caps. And this is a mandated policy. Policy 1648 Restart and Recovery Plan. This policy also has been revised and has been updated with the change that it's mandatory for students to wear face coverings in the school building. Changes were made throughout the policy to reflect the requirement of wearing face masks in the building. And there is provisions in there, exceptions for those cases for health reasons or whatever it may be. This policy is also mandated. And then Policy 1648.03 Restart and Recovery Plan, Full-Time Remote Instruction. This is new. Policy Guide 1648.03 has been developed to incorporate the full-time remote instruction option, addressed in the August 13, 2020 Executive Order 175. School districts that determine that they cannot provide in-person instruction must submit documentation to the Department of Education that includes, among other things, a date by which the school or school district anticipates the resumption of in-person instruction. This is a new policy guide and is mandated and must be adopted by the board. Policy 6440 Cooperative Purchasing. This policy guide 6440 has been revised to include updated definitions for lead agency, registered members, cooperative purchasing system and joint purchasing system. Language has been removed from this policy that was redundant. And two legal sites that were no longer accurate have also been updated. Policy Guide 6440 is now mandated due to these new statutory requirements. And Policy and Regulation 7440 School District Security. This policy has been updated to align with the law and is effective with the 2020-2021 school year. Policy Guide 7440 has been revised to include language addressing the requirement the district annually conduct security audits in accordance with the new law. Regulation Guide 7440 has been revised also to include a new Section H, annual school safety audit for each school building, which thoroughly outlines the new law and the requirements for school districts. These policy and regulation guides are mandated. And as a side note, as a school district, we have been performing the school, we have been performing the school safety audits for several years and this too is a mandated policy. Policy 7450 Property and Inventory. A change in law. So the policy was updated. Policy Guide 7450 has been revised to more accurately reflect the definitions of equipment and supply. The revised policy guide also includes language from the NJDOE's chart of accounts that states the board will use the criteria outlined in the revised definitions to make distinctions when recording property inventory in the district. An outdated New Jersey Administrative Code site was also removed. Policy Guide 7450 is now mandated in accordance with the Uniform Minimum Chart of Accounts. And Policies 8420 Emergency and Crisis Situations. This was approved and is effective for the 2020-2021 school years. The new law revised NJSA 18A:41-7 and requires school districts to ensure that individuals employed in the school district in a substitute capacity are provided with information and training on the school district's practices and procedures on school safety and security. The revision to the state statute requires a substitute employee to be trained in instruction on school security drills, evacuation procedures, and emergency response protocols. Strauss Esme has revised Policy Guide 8420 to include the new language in NJSA 18A:41-7 regarding substitute employees. And this policy is also mandated. And just as an aside, we also have been doing this as a district for many years, but now we're updating our policy. And my last item on the agenda was our education piece. I had recently attended the NJB Virtual Convention and there was a session that I attended, education during the pandemic, communication challenges facing school districts. So there was some interesting information that I thought I would share with the public. First section was on communication challenges. So conditions are constantly changing. Information is frequently outdated. The need to communicate as districts are doing things, designing the plane while flying it. The audience for crisis information has heightened concerns, fears and emotions and made parents less patient. One size doesn't fit all, conditions and how districts deliver instruction varies in different school districts. And another topic they discussed was the roles of boards and administrators in communicating during the pandemic. So I found this interesting also. The superintendent is the primary communicator for the operations of the school. If the board needs to comment on a board level decision, most boards have policy that the board president is the spokesperson. Communication between the board and the superintendent is vital so that everyone is on the same page. Remember that the superintendent runs the schools and the board of ed's role is to ensure they are well-run. Parents and the general public may reach out to the board of ed directly via email. And it is important to acknowledge their concerns, but you should pass those to the superintendent. Public comment period during board of ed meetings have a consistent policy on the parameters such as time limits. And the last one is presentations during board of ed meetings on exactly what is going on in the school and why are very helpful. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Ms. Siegel. Any questions for Mrs. Siegel from the board? Okay, thank you. We can move on to finance. Mr. Rutske?
Steve, Michelle's got her hand up. She's waving.
I could not see. I'm sorry, Michelle. Call out, please, if you're raising your hand. I can't see everybody. Michelle?
There we go. Yes, I was racing to unmute. Sorry. Ms. Siegel, on the bylaw 10, I'm sorry, 0131 that requires two readings to adopt a bylaw or policy. It's H, I believe, on the, on the agenda. So is it just this 0164.6 that only requires one reading and the rest of our policies do require two readings?
This one is a one reading and the others are follow our normal reading process.
Okay, so this is just the, the part that the New Jersey.
It's, it's final 0164, the Remote Public Board Meeting During a Declared Emergency. That is the one read.
Right. And it comes from NJAC 5:3. It's in, it's in the agenda. So the public should, you know, maybe take a look at that as well. Not, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Also updated in the minutes for the committee meeting too.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. President, can I ask group, this is Andy Polari, can I ask group a quick question? One of the things that we constantly hear from the community is the fact that they don't get a chance to come and ask questions until pretty late in the evening, 9:30, 10 o'clock because of the community report and everything else that goes on. Is there a policy required to move the public session a little bit ahead? Or how does the other boards connect business from their perspective to give people an opportunity to speak?
I actually don't know, Andy, how other boards do that.
Yeah, I mean, it's not just to you. I'm sure other board members heard the same thing too.
Andy, I think I can help answer that. I think that's really a board decision and that's something that maybe the next board would want to take up because I know I've been hearing the same kinds of complaints. We've all for years been hearing the same kinds of complaints. Just off the top of my head, maybe want to combine something, but that's a discussion, I think, for the next board and probably one that they should have because a lot of people don't want to stay up until, you know, until we're through most of the agenda. So let's see if we can move along and let the next board take that up if it's necessary, if that's okay with you. Okay, I think we can move on. Any other questions for Ms. Siegel?
Mr. Ryback, I believe that's covered in the board bylaws.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Rutske, finance?
All right, on to finance from our meeting of Wednesday, the 11th at 7:00 PM. We started off with very good news about two charitable donations that were given to the school district. The first was a donation of $1,776 from PPG Industries. That came through Blackboard Giving Fund, which is a donor-advised fund. So it comes in anonymous. That, that money was specifically to be directed to Oak Tree Elementary School. The second was a $5,000 donation from IT Serve Alliance. Pursuant to a solicitation letter from Dr. Alvik, it was awarded and directed for specific technology use. Per Dr. Alvik, it's going to be used for Chromebooks and Wi-Fi devices. Needless to say, the committee appreciated the donations and thanked the donors. And it's on tonight's agenda for acceptance. I'll of course take this time to once again thank the donors. Anonymous or not, we greatly appreciate all donations that come into the school district that help with our students. Thank you for that. We went on to talk about state reporting and we went over. And here's all your acronyms for you. CMP, which is the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. The ASSA, which is the Application for State School Aid. The DRTRS, which is the District Report of Transported Resident Students. And interestingly enough, the, that report about transportation, it really leans mostly on efficiency. We do great on this report. And if I understood correctly, even this year, that report is really based on what are our normal operating routes, not the adjustments we've made recently for some students, you know, half students one day, half students the other day. So as far as that report is concerned and our efficiency is concerned, it's, it's all based on what is our normal operating transportation schedule. And Mike, am I correct on that, Mr. Gorski?
Yes, sir. That's correct. And we have the highest efficiency rating in the county and one of the highest in the state, once again, which leads to about $5 million in transportation aid.
So I was just going to go into that efficiency and the aid and you got me. So yes, $5 million regularly comes in thanks to our excellent transportation report. So job well done to everybody there. We went to then to the debt service report and currently we are about ballpark of $10 million a year of principal and interest as far as debt service is concerned and the total amount of debt service outstanding is now less than $100 million, which given all the loans outstanding and the work that had been done in prior years, we're happy to have that number under $100 million. We, then the last report was the New Jersey Smart Report, which is correlated to the technology field. And Mr. Feldman has been doing a great job putting together that report. And for statistical purposes, we have 6,965 students using the technology and we have 1,204 active staff. And I know that the student number is slightly different than the population, student attendance number on our agenda tonight. And there's, I guess, always a small amount of wiggle room, let's say, in the statistics or one counts in one direction, one counts in another. Not 100% sure, but they're close, but not exact. That concludes my report for tonight. Oh, wait, wait, one last piece, the buses. I gotta remember the buses. So we're putting six buses up for sale. Mr. Gorski will be reporting that process and maybe even the conclusion of that at the next finance meeting. But we have six buses that are going out to pasture. They, by state rules, they have to come out of our fleet. And so we're going to, the transportation department is going to do the best they can to get the buses in as good a shape as possible and put them up for auction for whatever we can get.
Thank you, Mr. Rutske. Any questions for Mr. Rutske from the board? Anyone? Okay, we can move on. Mrs. Kalpanowicz, do you have anything for personnel?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Ryback. Personnel Committee met on November 11th. And I just want to say our personnel committee reports are very short due to confidentiality because there are things that we discuss in personnel that we are not allowed to discuss in public. So among other things, we revised the benefits coordinator job description and I think that's on the agenda today for approval. And Dr. Alvik talked about the opening of school this past Monday and I'm sure she will give you an update in her report. And that's all that I can give you for personnel.
Thank you. Question for Mrs. Kalpanowicz. Not seeing anyone. We could move on to our first public forum. When you're called upon, please don't.
We have curriculum.
I'm sorry. You're right. You know what?
We're there.
I forgot to write that down and I was at the curriculum meeting.
All right, we reviewed five curriculum documents. Physical education and health grades for 11th and 12th. Students are required to take three marking periods of physical education and one marking period of health education for each year in school. Developing, maintaining and evaluating recommended levels of health-related fitness are major objectives of the program. Physical education students are exposed to a wide variety of sports, games and physical activities. Groups of activities place emphasis on individual and dual sports with lifetime carryover value. Physical education courses assist students develop health-related fitness, physical competence and movement activities, cognitive understanding and positive attitudes towards physical activity so they can maintain healthy and physically active lifestyles. The health education curriculum for students embraces a body of knowledge that will establish a foundation for healthful, productive living. The next one was strength and conditioning. Strength and conditioning one is a program designed to constantly challenge students in all areas of fitness. Throughout the course, the school year, throughout the course of the school year, our students will be introduced to various strength and conditioning techniques. Students are required to have sufficiently mastered health and PE requirements prior to enrollment in strength and conditioning one. Students will participate in different training units such as strength training, endurance training and activity recovery training. These training units will help students learn and practice safe, effective and efficient fitness training techniques. The next two curriculum documents were the AP Capstone Documents. AP Capstone is an inclusive program designed to hone students' research and presentation skills. The Capstone is comprised of two year-long courses. The first is AP Seminar and the second is AP Research. There are no prerequisites for taking AP Seminar. Students of any ability level with any interests benefit from AP Seminar. AP Seminar is the prerequisite for AP Research. During the AP Research course, students conduct authentic research using qualitative and quantitative design. They present their research to an audience. AP Seminar Research Certificate is earned by students who meet the course requirements for AP Seminar and AP Research. Excuse me. The AP Capstone Diploma is earned by students who meet the course requirements for AP Seminar and AP Research and score three or higher on four AP exams in high school. In the 2021 to 2022 year, we In the 2021 to 2022 year, we will offer AP Seminar. And in the AP 22 to 23 school year, we will offer both AP Seminar and AP Research. Last one is world language pathways. This offers alternative pathways for world language students. They will be able to study multiple languages and allow them to accelerate their study of languages and provide students opportunities to take course in non-traditional settings, online or at colleges. The one thing I have to say is I've been on curriculum for a long time and I I have been, every year, I'm more and more impressed with the offering and the quality of the curriculum. The teachers and supervisors do an exceptional job of developing it. And I really think they offer our students the best that there is. And that's it.
I'd like to make a comment. Number one, the one with the language. And I said this at the committee meeting was really a wonderful type of program because it's helping kids that are really limited English proficient and because of an immersion into a language, which is the best way to learn it. And so it's improving their skills in language in general and certainly would help these students in school and beyond. So it's a great program because kids come into this country. I know when I was working, I would have a kid come in that was, let's say, 15, 16 years old, speaking no English. It's very difficult for that student, you know, especially at that age. So having something where we can immerse them in language is wonderful. And that goes against for our English dominant students to have them some, you know, immersion into other languages. It's the best way to learn. And in general, your statement about the curriculum committees, right, all the committees work very hard and you know, during meetings, sometimes we get bogged down with issues and people aren't aware, the public isn't aware of what's going on in the committees and the good work we have in the committees and the way we work together in committees. So this is really a good example of academic improvement and what we're doing to constantly improve academics in Monroe. Okay, any question for Mr. Mayo? And I apologize again, Jill, for skipping that.
Why, all right.
And now we're ready for the public forum. When you're called up, you have four minutes. Please don't put your switch to unmute because that'll be done automatically. If you do that, you will be muted. So Mr. Feldman, please have them state their name and address and they have four minutes.
Certainly, Mr. Board President. Just one other thing, when I do unmute you, if you could immediately state your name and address, but also say if you want your video privileges on, that'll give me a second to give you that option, okay? All right, we're gonna go with Brian Fabiano.
Can you hear me?
Brian, please state your name.
Brian Fabiano, 19 Patricia Place. Camera's not required. So there's been some, a lot of referring to the new board, you know, being seated next year. So I wanted to publicly congratulate Chrissy Skirby, Katie Belko, and Karen Bierman. I think this board certainly deserves some change and with change, you know, good things should happen. So I'm excited to see what next year and you know, how this board progresses. Thank everybody that's outgoing for their years of service. Couple of things, there was a comment about, you know, again, approaching the builders for, you know, financial contributions to the district, the town not supporting it. You know, that's a hard one, right? I don't know how much more we can ask the builders because through this election process, you know, it seems as though many of the builders or their engineering partners, you know, made donations, but you know, to the campaigns, some of the campaigns, not necessarily the district. But I'd like to see the new board come in, you know, once they're seated, I'd like to see them address this in the future and how we can get rid of that conflict of interest in having builders and engineers make political contributions to board members that are running because I think it's, you know, we've talked about it time and time and time again about the board having to be, you know, a you know, a nonpartisan, you know, organization. And I think, you know, that certainly shows that it may be not. I have a couple of questions regarding the reopening. You know, it's unfortunate, I feel like we're in Monroe showing up to the race and the race has already been, you know, run. And I'm very interested in seeing how, you know, in hearing how, you know, Dr. Alvik is going to deal with, you know, record high cases, many of the school districts around us now going back to remote. And I would like to see how we're going to give parents notice for an imminent, you know, back to remote only, in my opinion, with cases as high as they are. You know, I'm a little bit disappointed in how quickly or how last minute, you know, the high school cancellation of in-person instruction was due to the filters. And I have a question about how that could have been missed, who's overseeing this and why wasn't it reported back to the superintendent who oversees this plan? To come by surprise and leave parents and students hanging last minute, I have questions of how that would have gotten missed. I also have a question for Mr. Gorski as it relates to the CARES Act money. You referred to how that money is being spent. I'd like to know how the contractors are being selected, what that bid process looks like, and who's overseeing that money being spent. I have a question regarding the windows being open, talked about the windows being open for ventilation. I'd like to know what security threat has been evaluated for windows being open, especially on ground floor levels, you know, say there was an intruder or someone on the property, what risk is that set up for the students? I also have a question about, it sounds like there's, you know, the right hand might not necessarily know what the left hand is doing. Understandably, there's a lot going on, but again, there was a question about the wipes and making our own solution. Was the products to make our own solutions already purchased? If so, what are we doing with the money spent as it relates to that? My next question as it relates to the charity donations that were brought up tonight. There was a mention of a $5,000 IT Service Alliance donation that's on the agenda to be accepted tonight. I'm wondering why there was a public photo op with board members accepting what seemed to be accepting the donation. Can I finish my statement here? And why that would have been done prior to the board accepting the donation?
Okay, that time is up. Thank you. That was a lot of questions. We have to move on to the next person because your time was up. Mr. Feldman?
Yes, Mr. Board President, we have Pradeep Malam. Pradeep, if you do want video privileges, just please let me know. Thank you.
This is Pradeep for J place. I don't want video. I have a question regarding the ASSA application. Has this been submitted to the county or state?
I couldn't make out what he said. Dr. Alvik, did you, I couldn't understand.
Has the ASSA application submitted?
No, the date for that is due, I think, December 5th, Mr. Gorski, is that correct?
That's correct, Dr.
December 5th. It doesn't get submitted until December 5th.
In the final, in the last panel meeting, Mr. Gorski said that this application is ready to go. So that means the application is prepared?
Dr. Alvik? The application for the submission of the ASSA Application for State School Aid is still being finalized. There's a lot of data contained in the October 15th enrollment reports from all the schools and the classifications required, limited English proficiency, as well as low-income students. And that is all being proofread very carefully before it's submitted by the deadline. It has not been filed yet.
Thanks. Thanks for the answer. I requested for a particular Oprah and I asked like how many students came from Jamesburg to our high school? And I received a response and I did a follow-up and I received a response that district doesn't have that number right now. So that means we don't know how many kids are in high school and how many are coming from the Jamesburg at all. Like we don't have a daily count or we don't have, like, I see there is October 30th or 31st numbers are published in the enrollment section of the meeting, the current agenda. So do we know how many people are coming from Jamesburg and how many people are coming from Monroe Township or not?
Mr. Ryback?
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, I believe Jamesburg is paying for 270 students, but I know they're sending between, what, 250 and 260? Mike, you made that number?
Mr. Ryback, the gentleman's question went to the numbers as of the October 15th count. As I've previously stated, it is unfinal yet and is still a deliberative document.
But we passed it October 15th.
Whoa, a big part.
The point is, the point is we have October 15th. We passed it October 15th. After around a month also, we don't have a particular date, like how many kids are coming from Jamesburg in our schools? Do we know or don't we know?
Well, I'd appreciate if you let Mr. Gorski finish before you cut him off. I don't think that's very polite. Nobody cuts you off. So, Mr. Gorski, you were finishing your answer?
Yes, if Mr. Malam would be patient a little longer until the report is finalized, we can give him accurate information that we are comfortable releasing. We're not going to give him preliminary information that's still deliberative because who knows where it's going to end up once it's public.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks for the explanation, Mr. Gorski. Now my question to Dr. Alvik and the Board President. Do we know, do we have a tally of the kids that every day, that how many kids are attending our school district? And how many are attending from the Jamesburg?
Yes, we know, we have our student enrollment. I don't have it in front of me. You have it on the board agenda.
Information why you are hiding it to release it on a particular day statistic to the public when it is requested through Oprah.
Dr. Alvik?
I can't speak to the specific Oprah request.
Dr. Alvik, the speaker is misrepresenting the information contained in the Oprah request. Again, if he could be patient a little longer till the report's finalized by the deadline of December 5th, we'll be happy to provide it.
Thank you. His time's up. Feldman's have the next person?
Yes, Mr. Board President, just a reminder too, once you are done speaking, please lower your hand. Otherwise, I will not be able to call you in the next forum. We have Betty Saab, Mr. Board President. Betty, if you do want video privileges, please let me know. Thank you.
So, more drive and no, I don't need, I do not need video privileges. I just, Mr. Tufano brought up in the Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Report, the new playground at Mill Lake. And I have had a chance to actually walk over. I live close and it looks fabulous. It's great. It's a much more inclusive for some of our students that perhaps are not as physically able to do things as others. My question is, is there any plan to perhaps at one of our elementary schools, being that now we do have a number of children that have wheelchairs? I know we purchased a wheelchair van, which is great. Do we have any plans to put a wheelchair swing at any of those facilities? And that's my question.
Dr. Alvik, I'm not sure of that one. Maybe you know the answer.
No, I'm not sure of the answer to that either. It's something I can speak with Mrs. Ruella about. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next person?
One second, Mr. Board President. Just give me one second. Okay, I apologize for that. Mr. Ram Roganath, you're up next. Please let us know if you need video.
Ram Natt, Six Owens Drive, Monroe. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yeah, I don't need the video, but I was wondering whether I could just yield my four minutes of time so that you can answer the questions that are eloquently posed by Mr. Fabiano, Mr. Brian Fabiano.
Dr. Alvik, you have, I think, the first one or two may be better for you than Mr. Gorski. I know you have the financial ones. Do you have the question?
Mr. Ryback, I'll be happy to start with the question regarding the CARES Grant. Mr. Fabiano had, to my recollection, asked how the procurement method was for the CARES Grant money. The CARES Grant went for professional services to have Dr. Lynch provide training. Professional services are exempt from bidding and quoting because of the unique characteristics of the quality of the licensed professional as well as the cost. The Board of Education approves those via resolution and they are exempt from bidding. The other majority of purchases for supplies and PPE and all that type of material was purchased through the purchasing consortiums. Where the Board of Education has an exemption from going for bidding and quoting because you're buying it from a low-cost consortium. And it has demonstrated savings below the state required bidding and quoting thresholds. And then there were other purchases that were just below the bidding and quoting threshold that just require some due diligence on behalf of those ordering because they don't meet the threshold. So all procurement laws were followed. All of these grants are carefully audited. And the public should rest assured that the expenditures went in accordance with what the grant was approved for. And the methods used serve the taxpayers by saving.
Okay, couple of the other questions, one of the questions was about the wipes. Yes, the Brew Tab solution was purchased, not for the entire year, it was purchased for an amount of time. The Brew Tab solution is something that is used for our buses. It's also used through our custodians. So yes, there was money spent and Brew Tabs were purchased for that purpose. And they will be consumed by our school district, so they will not go to waste. Since then, that was our original plan for disinfecting the desks in the classrooms. But since then, the wipes became much more readily available, so we were able to purchase wipes that were similar to Lysol and Clorox wipes that you use in your home. And that's what we're now using for wiping down desks in the classroom. But the Brew Tab solution, which was the original plan, will be used within the district. So it's not any money wasted. It's something that will continue to be used. The windows for ventilation, as a security risk to students, our windows do not open all the way. So I don't think it's any more of a risk, security risk than if we open our windows in the spring or in the fall with the students in the classroom. And we also looked at making sure that all of the windows were properly and that there are screens in all of the windows. The question about the charity donations, about the photo op, yes, we did. The company that was donating the money did ask for a photo op. But that money is not deposited until the Board of Education approves the donation, which is on the agenda for this event. I think I got all of them. Oh, and then the question about the advance notice for the reopening. I apologized. I did not want it to be a last-minute thing. I've tried to be as forthcoming as possible with all of the decisions being made with the reopening. Unfortunately, there are things that come up. We're working around the clock. We worked around the clock to make sure that we opened on Monday for our students and I was not happy about having to postpone the high school opening. What happened was is we put in orders for all of the filters. Those orders came in as one lump dropped at the board office, not even dropped at the schools where they were supposed to be. There were multiple orders for schools and our custodians and maintenance staff were working around the clock over the weekends to try and get these in in time for our opening. And we did not find out until that we did not have the high school filters that were needed for the newer units, which are larger units, until when I walked in Thursday morning and I heard it Thursday morning. So as soon as I had that information, we tried to find out exactly when we could get them and I got the information out to the families as soon as possible. I was not happy about having to do it last minute and I apologize. I'm trying to make sure I get that information out as timely as possible.
Thank you, Dr. Alvik. Ram, I believe that's it for you. Do you have any other question? Your time is up?
Time's up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Feldman, have someone else?
Yes, Mr. Board President, we have Krishna Takali.
Hey, good evening. This is Krishna Takali. I would like to continue with the same questions that Brian Fabiano asked. There was a question about the reopening, right? The school district went into hybrid just this week. And what Brian, paraphrasing his words, were like, you know, he was, that we are late to the reopening. And today, there's news all over, there is a Twitter. And uh today there's news all over the um, there is a Twitter uh thread that shows from New York mayor who's shut down the school district in New York City, right? So there's a question about what's the plan if we have to go remote or, you know, what's the plan with the growing number of COVID cases? Um, we're um having sports where we're uh meeting with teams from outside of Monroe and we have uh student athletes test positive or, you know, they have to go to the testing process and all. Uh, can you please explain that part? The second question I have is uh, what's the plan around builder contributions, right? I mean, what are we going to do about it or when are we, uh, what's the follow-up on, uh, you know, I understand that the township didn't want to send that letter or is not uh um illegally advised for them to do, uh, send the letter out, but what's the next steps in the process? And how are we going to get it and what kind of donations are we looking for in this quarter? Can this be answered, please?
Well, I I'll start by saying that um Krishna, I'm going to be reading a letter. I read it, uh, I sent it out to the board. Uh, but I'll be reading it tonight at my um president's report. It's a follow-up letter to the four developers that we sent to. Can't obviously force them, you know, legally, we can't force them to donate. The impact fees are unfortunately illegal in New Jersey. Um, but uh, no, no harm in trying. We wouldn't be any worse off than we are right now. So let's give it another shot. Doctor Alvik, you want to add to that or?
Well, with regard to the reopening, um, I'm monitoring the numbers also. Um, I'm watching the the governor's press conferences daily. I am in constant contact with our Office of Emergency Management and the Department of Health. So we will continue to monitor um all of the cases within the schools. Um, and I communicate that out to the community so everyone is aware if there's a case um within our schools. The other piece of this is also, um, that's a challenge and I'll talk about it a little bit more in my uh in my superintendent's report is um staffing, because when we have a staff member who needs to quarantine for a reason, then they're out and we have to get a staff. So this is an ongoing process. Um, we all have to be flexible. Uh, you know, we're doing the best that we can within the school district. I understand that it's a hardship. Um, I I I don't make any decision lightly when it comes to this. Um, if we have to go hybrid because either we have cases in our schools that are related and we're following the um the road back plan or if we have um issues where we can't staff our building because we have staff members that that must quarantine, um, then we're going to have to move to hybrid. So the goal is to continue moving forward, um, to continue to bring our students in. If the governor shuts us down, that's a different issue. That's not that that's not in my control, but we're monitoring this on a daily basis.
Thank you. Uh, and and next person, please, Mr. Feldman.
Yes, Mr. Board President, we have just one more on the list. It's Santosh Sean. Santosh, if you do want your video shown, please let us know. Um, actually, we just had one more person after that, too.
Okay.
Yeah, hi, uh, Santosh from 126 Morgan Way. I have the same question regarding the hybrid schooling. And uh, I I've been working on this uh on COVID for past eight months as a volunteer. And the kids carry asymptotic and they're not show any symptoms either. You would do any kind of pre-scanning, anything? So there are a lot of chances of safety is measures to be taken care. So I know, uh, of course, we are taking care of the measures, but uh the safety is more than what uh like doing hybrid school. So we bit worried, what is the plan? And of course, uh, our cases are going high because the numbers are showing up and every week it's showing almost a week thirty COVID cases coming in Monroe like uh same thing what it's showing in month of May and April. So when everyone is closing, we are opening up, so bit worried. So what I know you guys are monitoring. So uh, what is the plan and what is this? I think you you guys answered, but uh on the safety side, what else? We are, we are really looking into it. So that'll be really good. We can answer that.
Um, other than we we are screening everyone, every staff and student is screened before they come into the building every day. Um, we're maintaining the social distance, requiring face coverings. Um, we're doing frequent hand washing, making sure that we're, we have the hand sanitizer around the building, um, cleaning the areas, disinfecting every evening. The buses are disinfected between every route. Um, and we have very low numbers of students within our schools. Um, so we're able to do that and and, you know, and and parents do have the option um to continue their students as full remote students, um, which has lessened the number of students in our schools. So that, you know, and again, we just kind of continue to monitor. Um, and if we need to move to full remote, then we'll move to full remote. Um, it it's really just a matter of safety um for our staff and students, which has been our priority since March.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, um, Mr. Feldman said there was one more.
Yes, Mr. Board President, Prakash Parab, if you would like your video shown, please just let me know. I'm going to unmute you now.
Video, please. Thank you. Uh, this is Prakash Parab, 33 Denner Drive. Uh, I saw the video of the reopening plan, okay? I really congratulate, um, you know, wholeheartedly, you guys have given in full whatever the requirement shields wiping and all. Um, and governor always defends that only 50 schools out of 3,000 have outbreaks, but he has to correct it because not all 3,000 schools are open. So only few schools are open remotely, maybe nine 50 or 70 district and today it is 90 districts. What I'm worried about is Middlesex County has a highest number for last two days. And uh, you know, so mostly, uh, I'm really, I'm a scientist. The young children, although they are infected, they don't get symptoms. And if they come and spread, we, there is no current guideline you have, we can catch it. They they will not have temperature. So in Europe, you may find this funny, they're even sampling the sewers, okay? To in the schools to find out there is an infection in the school. So I don't think New Jersey any schools had adopted, but you guys have to go out of the box and look at how that sampling can be done. And also, you you guys are not sampling the air samples to make sure that airborne COVID is there. So in particular rooms, a particular section area, there is no protocol we all have. So I request you all to proactively look into it. I know that many of the Superintendent Association, they want to proactively close the schools. But here, uh, you know, unless the bomb falls and suddenly a high high outbreak is there, that time we will suddenly announce the school will close. Uh, like last time we did on March 21st. The uh, I don't know, Dr. Alwisch, I know your hands are tied, but uh look into these opportunities and uh be proactive is that is the request. You have done whatever the best you can do, I see that, but this is a bomb about to fall sometime. Another one thing is education is excellence is what many of the, you know, have requested. So please look into it or how, where we were few years back, two, three years back, where we are today and where we want to be. So put that into the object to define uh what is meant by education excellence, where we were three years back, where we are today and where we want to be. So that will be a good thing. And I'm looking at the enrollment. Uh, in last four years, we added 271 students, but I know that that is not only the number. Apple Garth has 176% over capacity. Monroe Township Middle School has 141% over capacity. Uh, and Oak Tree, 174%. High School, 136%. So it is a question of our children, you know, when they come back to school, we are already overcrowded and these these builders don't care. I think we have to look at the new way of thinking and mayors and all of us have to think over as a new, the new residents come in, they pay high taxes. Uh, you know, we have to think of these builders are not going to pay. The new residents, when they come in, they pay high taxes, so we get more money for the expansions and schools. So that is fair enough. As the new community comes, they contribute for expansion. So think over it. So tho- those are my comments. Dr. Alwisch, I don't think you have seen the sewers have been um sampled and still come back.
Time's up, Prakash. Um, I think we, is that, that's it? Mr. Feldman, no one else, right?
There are more on the list, uh, Mr. Board President.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much. Uh, we can move on to our assistant superintendents.
Mr. Ryback, there are more people on the that are waiting.
I'm sorry, Mr. Board President, I meant there are more on the list.
Okay, let's go.
We have, we have Deb Pellella. Deb, I'm going to unmute you and let me know if you need video.
No video, please. Good evening, everyone. Deborah Pellella, 15 Louise Lane.
Hi, Deb.
Hello, uh, I'd like to share with you um that I was very happy this week to see a successful thus far a week back at school. Facebook has been flooded. I don't know if you've seen, but tons of status updates with happy pictures of children. And it was such a nice thing to see and to look at at this present time. So my view calling is thank you for at least getting half of my household back in school for the purpose of um learning. But additionally, uh, mentally, it was a really great thing to look forward to, to go to, and it has been very successful for us. And uh, as was my teams that my children, my child is on, as well as seeing and hearing from other parents. So I'm very happy to report that. I don't know if you've been hearing that or not, but from my angle, we are very, very happy with thus far and and being physically in school. Um, the one thing I did want to um bring up and I'm bringing it up because it is a is a rumor that I wanted to address. Uh, the rumor is, I understand the issue with the filters with the high school from what Dr. Alvik had just said a few minutes ago. But additionally, um, we are hearing that there is still this issue with um a possible shortage of teachers. If you could um touch on that and either dispel or go further on uh this information that um many of us are hearing. Additionally, if there is a shortage of possible substitutes as well, can we um look at reaching out to the community and uh, you know, asking for more applications perhaps to help fill that void?
Um, yes, yes, we do. There there, we are still looking at some staffing issues, um specifically at the high school, but we're getting closer to that. So I I'm I'm confident that we're going to do that. One of the things we've done, and you'll see on the agenda tonight, there's a lot of staff members who are on leave. Um, so one of the things that we've worked with with the teachers' union is that those teachers are able to work from home and they're on leave for a specific reason. Um, whether it be medical or childcare or whatever it is. Um, or they're, they have to um quarantine because there was a, they were um affected with COVID because exposed um outside of school or within schools. Um, so we worked with the union that they're able to work from home um and be able to teach remotely. And we're putting substitute teachers in the classroom with any students that are in school. Um, so that's something that we've worked with the union on to try to to try to do that. A lot of districts are not doing that and that's why a lot of districts are closing because they don't have the staffing, because they're not allowing staff to work from home. Uh, and that's one of the things that I I that that we've been working with the union on to to do that. Um, so we, I I'm confident with that and you're absolutely right, the substitute pool. When we reached out um a uh about a month ago to our substitutes that are currently on our list, we did have 89 substitutes say that they were willing to come into the building and willing to work. Um, now that we're reaching out to them and saying, we need you to come in, they're selling us no, they're not going to get it. So one of the things we have done is closed and reach out and and um uh, put out the the help wanted ads for more substitutes. Um, but that is a process to get them approved within the district. So it does take a little bit of time to do that, but it's definitely something that we're looking at.
Okay, great, wonderful. Thank you for your honesty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please, Mr. Feldman.
Board President, we have Ravi.
Good. Ravi, welcome.
Oh, hi, uh, this is, this is Ravi Chatterwell. I need a, need a uh video. Uh, address is 14 Burn Court. Um, I couldn't agree with one of the points that uh Prakash made regarding uh uh the way it is spreading. Obviously, we are seeing a lot of cases rising and New York City has closed uh closed schools. Uh, it just feels like it's just a matter of time before we have closed schools and we'll have some cases out here. So I understand that your hands are tied. Uh, the question that I have for you is this, uh, my son is in middle school and uh what I've noticed is that uh some teachers use Zoom, some teachers use Google Teams or Google Classroom or something like that. Uh, and there is no one place where he can go and just get a schedule for the entire week, right? And there has been a lot of confusion, particularly this week, when some teachers felt the the class started at some time and uh it, he thought it was a a different time and he missed a few classes. And I'm sure a lot of other parents also have the same issue. And my question to you is, uh, why not just have all teachers have the same media? And why can't um the schools provide uh a schedule for each kid and where the kid can go and just see the schedule for the entire week? It's 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 a very simple technological solution that I think the school can provide. Uh, it's and it's very easy to implement. Uh, I think if you guys were to do that, it would help a lot of parents and the kids. So if you can comment on that, that'd be great.
Doctor Ravi?
So the the students do have a schedule and then their teacher should be sharing with them. Yes, you're correct, there may be some teachers using Zoom, there may be some teachers using Google Teams. What we did a couple of years ago, two years ago, actually, we started using Schoology at the high school and the plan was to move Schoology down into the middle school and to the elementary schools. Um, we started with two-year training for all of our staff at the high school to use Schoology um so that we could get the entire district on one platform. Unfortunately, with COVID, we've run into the situation where we don't, we haven't been able to continue our professional development on that because we're so focused on the instructional piece now with the hybrid remote. Um, so my, what my suggestion would be is to reach out to your child child guidance counselor and they can help you with that. So that would be something that they could, that they could do at the school.
Thank, thank you.
Feldman, next person.
Yes, uh, Mr. Board President, we have Sarah Aziz. Sarah, if you want video, please let me know.
Hello? Hi. Hi, my name is Sarah Aziz, 31 Slott Drive. Um, I wouldn't, I'm disappointed that the meeting with the legislators was canceled. Uh, you know, uh, these are our elected officials, uh, Representative Trenton. Uh, I think we have a right to ask them questions. I think dialogue is better than no dialogue. Um, and I was wondering if you could explain why this meeting?
Yes. Um. I'm sorry.
Hello?
Yes. Is that me? I um, I'm trying to answer. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right. I'm crazy. All right. It seems to me that when the Mr. President first put the other question um, the community, who's, after the state legislature. But as we say, we want to have a uh a good decision. Steve, I apologize. We can't hear anything you're saying, Steve.
Mr. Ryback, we may want to, um, I think what needs to happen is me too. That was it. Mr. Feldman muted Mrs. Aziz because I think we were having feedback from her mic. So we didn't hear what your response was, Steve.
Okay, uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, uh, when when this was first brought up in in Mr. Polaris's committee, I think all intentions, at at least what was being said was that we wanted to have a a a very fair meeting, a very positive meeting with our legislators. Um, and as things were going on, I was picking up basically the vision in 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 the board concerning process and and ground rules. I was even um hearing the word confront. And and that's not the feeling that I was getting and uh no- nothing was coming together in that area. Um, so I I felt that I didn't want to embarrass this board. I didn't want to embarrass our state legislators, its community. Um, my my suggestion is if the next board wants to continue with this, maybe they can iron out the differences, but there wasn't enough time to work on this. I didn't see any, the differences being ironed out, so I decided to um cancel it and it's still available if they want. I imagine the uh, the next board wants to do it, they could pursue it, it could pursue it. And that's it. Is there any other person, Mr. Feldman?
Yes, there is, Mr. Board President, we have Christine Skirby.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, Chrissy Skirby, 21 Freakness Drive. Um, I just had a a couple of questions and and some comments. Um, I know I listened to all of the committee meetings this week and last week. And what was stated about the legislator meeting was that it was canceled for obvious reasons. Um, I don't think that the public knows what the obvious reasons are, so if you could elaborate. elaborate more on that, and you keep alluding to, you know, the new board, but yet you're going, going to read a letter tonight that you're sending to builders, that, that letter was, you know, it was, you read it during the committee meeting, and it was, it was a very harsh tone that you took with the, with the builders. When in actuality, who you probably should be targeting is the engineering firms that represent the builders. If you had tuned into the town council meeting, you would see that there are consulting companies, engineering firms that go to the planning board on behalf of the big builders, Toll Brothers, Kay Hubnanian, and others. So really, you may be barking up the wrong tree of going to a large builder who you really should be soliciting are those that made campaign contributions to Board of Ed candidates. Because I find it interesting that your letter was dated early October, and very shortly after that, $8,000 got donated to a campaign for Board of Ed from engineering firms that represent these builders. So maybe your letter really should not have been directed there. It seems that they did answer, but they answered in a form of campaign contributions. And again, I, I don't understand why you did cancel the meeting with the legislators. It only goes to show that this current board does not want to hold our elected officials to the fire, that they do not want to allow the residents and the taxpayers of Monroe Township to actually ask the questions, the hard questions that we should be asking, and, and really advocating for them to answer us with fair funding in Monroe Township. And it's really unfortunate that Mr. Polari did put in all that time and did set up this meeting, and it was just arbitrarily canceled. It wasn't spoken at a board meeting to cancel. I'd like to know whose decision was it to cancel? Was it Dr. Alvik? Was it the board president? And, and why exactly? What was the reason that was given?
Well, are you finished?
I, I, yes, but I would not like to be muted unless I, because I would like to speak if I have more time.
Okay. Well, it was my decision to cancel. I just stated why when I answered Mrs. Aziz. Now, as far as the letter, this letter is going to the developers because it's the developers, Mr. Skirby, that decide on, on the development. They buy the land, they decide what's going to be developed. The engineers are hired by them. They're not in that decision-making capacity. If an engineer, I'm not going to mix up a political campaign here for a Board of Ed seat to donating from the builder. We have to speak to the builders directly. As far as
Well, and you should be speaking to those that represent
I didn't, I didn't interrupt you. I didn't, I didn't interrupt, interrupt you. Let me
Well, it's my four minutes. It's not yours.
Really? Well, I asked you if you finished, and I'm now responding. So now it's my mic, not yours.
No, it's, I'm the public. I have four minutes to speak.
Mrs. Skirby, you have four minutes to speak. I have some time to, to answer. You don't
Well, you finished, you finished the, the answer, and I was responding to your
Four minutes right now arguing with me, and that's, and that's ridiculous. As far
Your answer is ridiculous.
When we said, well, I think your statement is ridiculous. You're not aware of what we say to each other at, when we're at meetings with developers. You're not there. You don't know what we're arguing about.
And when do these meetings with developers take place?
That occurred over the, over a few years when we were invited and spoke and speak and have spoken to them. You're not there. You're not aware of anything. You're confusing
You're right, we're not. But it's clear that they're, they're donating money to campaigns, and we see what you've done.
You're through. Let's move on.
You're through. Goodbye.
Yes.
We have Renee Kokoska, Mr. Board President.
Okay.
I don't need video. And I'm Renee Kokoska, 231 Mount Smalls Road, Monroe Township, New Jersey. Mr. Board President, I'd like to donate my four minutes for you to continue answering Mrs. Skirby's question.
That's fine, if I could finish. So I was the one that decided, and as I said, and I stated that when I, in my answer to Mrs. Aziz. It's my feeling that these engineering firms, they donated to political campaigns on their own. Our, our dealing is with the developers. Those who are, those are the people that are, that are spending the money that decided to build in Monroe. And we want to deal with the top and, and the, the heads of these companies are who we have to deal with. As far as, you know, working with the legislators, we have been working with the legislators for years. Have we been very successful in increasing our state aid? No, we've, we've got an increase, but nowhere is near what's necessary. And I guess part of it, to be honest with you, is the fiscal situation in, in the state over the past number of years. But when we have meetings in, in their offices with them, these aren't very easy meetings, and, and they're very candid. And yet still, we have a, you know, positive relationship because they're the people that are elected, they're in office. And it's very important for us to be able to have conversations with them. And, you know, if you want to get something done, if you have a shot at getting something done, you don't want to be in a position of not speaking to your legislator. I think that would be a bad move for, for any Board of Education. I wish we, I wish we could have been more successful over the years. I'm going back many years, maybe 10 years, but hasn't been the case. And, you know, it's unfortunate for this town. But as far as canceling that meeting was my decision to cancel, I just felt that the, the dynamics of this board were not for a favorable meeting. That doesn't mean that it can't happen in the future. And certainly, if anybody has a question for the legislators, they could call, they could write individually. They can come up to a board meeting and say they wrote, and, and have an answer. But it's, it's just something that I didn't think would, would be successful. It's my decision. I stand by it. And if people don't agree, I'm, I'm sorry. Okay.
At this time, Mr. Board President, we have no one else with their hand.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Feldman. Now we can move on to Assistant Superintendent's report. Dr. Lehman?
Good evening. Good to see everyone. I've been doing this the past few months, and I will continue to do so. I want to start by just thanking everyone for their coordination and cooperation as we navigate. This is a non-traditional school year. We're blazing ground as we have since March. You know, we've certainly been flexible. Everyone's been flexible. So staff, students, teachers, families, board members, everyone, the community. We are just adapting to what information we get and, and conditions that are constantly changing. So thank you for just being flexible and supportive in, in what we're doing here for the students in the township. So we've transitioned and are continuing to transition to our hybrid synchronous model. Today was the first day for our purple cohort, grades K to eight. The past two days, the prior two days were for the gold cohort. Instructionally, we continue to provide, provide staff with options and tools as they transition back to the classroom with their students, both in person and remote. Those tools include technology. It could be devices. It could be cables. It could be things to prop up devices. We provide curricular resources. We've been doing that throughout the pandemic. And we've also been tweaking staff, utilizing staff and supporting our staff with other staff in the buildings. We've been doing that creatively. So everyone can be as productive and efficient and effective as possible. As we move forward, we will continue to support the staff as their needs evolve. We'll make sure they have the training they need so we can ensure that we keep the rigor that we expect here in Monroe Township. And then, you know, hopefully sooner than later, we can head back to a full in-person model, whether that's winter, spring, wherever the, wherever the path leads us, we, we want to be ready to come back and get back to business as usual. This year, just a separate topic here, this year, in conjunction with the Patriots Warrior Club at the high school, the Monroe Township School District is going to be working on a special project for our veterans. Many of the VA hospitals and VA homes have been hit particularly hard with COVID this year, and we'd like to let them know that our community supports them during this difficult time. We're reaching out to the entire Monroe Township School Community, asking students and families to record a short video clip thanking our veterans for their service. Submission details are included on a letter that was sent home or will be sent home very shortly. This is something that's been spearheaded by the department chair and the social studies department chairs, the coordinators, our supervisors. The staff is also going to bring the students on board in terms of writing some letters and thank yous. But this is something that we're going to push out to the community in terms of a video piece. There'll be a link to upload videos and instructions on parameters and things like that. But we're excited to support the veterans as we move forward. And then finally, please take a moment to check out our fall virtual Monroe Township High School Coffee House. The links for the coffee house, I believe they hit social media yesterday. They're on various high school social media feeds, the band feeds and things. The coffee house showcases students performing choral and instrumental acts. The congratulations to the student performers and thank you to the Monroe Township High School Performing Arts Department, including our choir director, Ms. Segal, for the, for this project. This is our fall coffee house. Last year, during the, well, when we were in person, but also during the pandemic, we continued the coffee houses. So I would anticipate seeing more in the future. And then that department also recently computed, completed a very successful marching band season. So congratulations to that department for getting through the fall season and kind of blazing forward despite the conditions around. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Le. Any questions for Dr. Lehman? Not seeing anyone. We can move to our superintendent's report, Dr. Alvik.
Mrs. Arminio has a question, Mr. Ryback.
I'm sorry, Ms. Arminio. I didn't see you.
Actually, I don't have a question. I was remiss last week in thanking Dr. Lehman for his service to our country. I hope it's okay to personalize this, Dr. Lehman. You were a soldier for our country. And in honor of Veterans Day, I would like to thank you, and I'm sure many of our board and our staff and our community. Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Ms. Arminio. Yes, you're absolutely right. Okay, Dr. Alvik?
Okay, so on the agenda this evening, you see four retirements. So I want to take a moment to congratulate each of them. Our supervisor athletics, health, and PE, Mr. Greg Byer, is retiring effective January 1st. Mr. Byer has served the students of Monroe for almost 34 years. He's leaving very big shoes to fill. Mrs. Deborah Stepensky is a teacher of business at the high school, is retiring effective February 1st after 26 years. So thank you for your outstanding work with our students. We've heard Ms. Stepensky's name with some of our award-winning students in, in our business department. Mrs. Christina Basili, she's a special education teacher at our high school. Thank you for your great work with our special education students for 20 years. Mrs. Basili is retiring at the end of the school year. And then Mr. Philip Nicolo, our head custodian at the high school for nine and a half years, is retiring December 1st. So to him, I thank him for his dedicated service to our students and our staff. And I want to wish each of them a very long and healthy retirement. Last week, organized by the Whole Child Committee, we celebrated Falcon Families Rock Appreciation Week. Several businesses within our community offered coupons and discounts for all, for all families. So thank you to Antonio's Restaurant, Bovine Burgers, and Burrito Bowl Mexican Grill. Families participated by showing their Falcon spirit, posting pictures on Padlet, and our staff wrote thank you notes to our families also on Padlet. The links were shared with families. The township conducted a sound off on last Monday at 4:00 PM to show, show their appreciation. And then the families who did post their pride on Padlet were entered, entered into a raffle for coupons from Wawa, Monroe Bagel, Bizarre Bagels, and Unified Apparel. So I hope everyone enjoyed the week. This week, we did welcome students back in person for the hybrid schedule at all of our schools. At the high school, we did welcome back our self-contained TAPS and Falcon Pal students. All other seven schools, we welcomed back students who chose the hybrid model, as well as our self-contained classes. Dr. Lehman and I have visited schools all week to observe, observe, sorry, observe the arrival and look in on classes. The percentages shared with all the families on the October 22nd memo are close to the numbers that we're seeing in our schools. So in our middle school, we have 617 students attending in person, half on one day, half on the other day, and 1,170 students participating virtually. In Barkley Brook, we have 43 students in the gold cohort, 27 students in the purple cohort, and Brooks, and then 174 remote. Brookside, 70 students gold, 57 purple, 254 remote. Mill Lake, 94 gold, 96 purple, 193 remote. Woodland, 72 gold, 92 purple, 150 remote. Oak Tree, 34 gold, 54 purple, 670 remote. Apple Garth, 28 gold, 31 purple, 393 remote. So with these numbers, it's made it so we were very careful with making sure that we can social distance in all of our classrooms, and making sure that all of our students are going through the screening process. It was great to see the students and the staff. They were so excited, as Ms. Pellella shared earlier, to see the students. They were excited to be there. The teachers are excited to see the students. We were following all the protocols for the daily screening, social distancing, face coverings, and frequent interaction. Lessons are being conducted, as Dr. Lehman described earlier. Unfortunately, we did have to delay the hybrid opening at the high school, as, as I mentioned earlier, because of the filter and also some staffing concerns that were still working out. I made that difficult decision to just delay. And again, I do apologize for that last minute decision. It was not, we were not able to, I, I was really hoping that we were going to be able to open. So right now, we are planning a December 7th opening for the high school. And I do want to thank, as Dr. Lehman did, the entire staff and families for everything that we're doing in order to do what's best for our students and to keep our students and our staff safe. As has been mentioned earlier, we are continuously monitoring and communicating about any COVID-19 cases at the school district, and I will continue to do that. I work very closely with the Middle Sex Department of Health and with our Office of Emergency Management in the township, to identify any close contacts of any cases, notifying the patient, the close contacts of what they need to do, communication to the community, communication to the board, communication to the county. In addition to the positive cases that have been communicated, there are instances where staff members or students are identified as a close contact of a positive case outside of the school district. When the district's notified of this, either the student or the staff member are instructed to quarantine, and then we work with the staff member if they have to quarantine at home, that they're able to work remotely. And again, this is, this is making it possible for us to staff our schools. They're working remotely. They're providing instruction remotely, and we're putting a substitute teacher in the classroom. So the teacher is still teaching the class. The substitute teacher is there with the in-person students for supervision, and obviously in case of any emergencies. We will continue to monitor all cases. I will continue to communicate out as, as we go. I do know that I, I am aware that the cases are rising. Chief Biness calls me whenever he has a report from the county of any cases, and, and we're continually monitoring that. So I will continue to communicate, and hopefully we will continue to be in person with our lower numbers in the schools. Hopefully, we'll be able to stay in person. I am concerned with the holidays coming up, and more people having to quarantine due to holidays, holiday gatherings, or any exposure outside of that. And we'll monitor as we go. So I don't know if there's any questions from the board on that?
Does anyone have any?
Dory, Dr. Alvik, I have a question, if I may.
Go ahead, Paul.
All right, thank you. So in, in sort of keeping track of the emails that come out from you regarding any positive cases, am I correct that it's, the majority have been sort of sports or activity related, more so than students, students just throughout their day, or teachers throughout their day contacting or contracting?
Yeah, but, but remember, we've only been in school for three days.
No, but I mean, yeah, but we've had other cases the last few weeks.
Yeah.
You've reported out. And it just seemed like most times, it's, it's a sporting activity. I just, I don't
When it, when it's come to students, when it's come to students, it's been a sporting activity, but we've also had staff members.
Oh, kind of.
Not separate.
And so, and then when you have the staff members, right, you've reported that either they've been in contact or they haven't been in contact, and then they quarantine for 14 days and work from home.
Yes.
So that is, that part of the process is working, so to speak?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Comments? I'd like to make a comment. One, just to follow up with what Dr. Alvik said, I certainly want to thank Greg Byer for his many years of service and dedication. And also thank our attorney, Mary Smith, for just all her hard work and professionalism. She will be missed, and I wish her the best of luck. Okay, I think we can vote, Mr. Gorski?
Oh, wait, it's recommended. I have to bake the recommendation first.
Oh, Pat.
It's recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items A through BG.
Second.
I move it. Who seconded it?
I seconded it.
Mr. Tofano seconded.
Okay, but I also have a question, please.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Okay, Dr. Alvin, on B, C, the certified staff in the following step guide. Okay. Starting, well, I don't want to mention names, but the, well, I guess I can. Emily Martin from Emily Martin, there's new positions to after school. To let's see, Christopher, and I'm not going to be able to say his last name. These are all from fund, the special revenue fund 20, I believe.
Title funds, yes.
Yes, but what are the, what title?
This, we have. Title one funds. No, actually, the one for B, C is for our ELL students. So that is title 3A. Is that correct, Dr. Lehman? Yes, 3A, title 3A for ELL students.
So when you say they're coming from the title funds, that is, that's, those funds are supplied by whom?
That's that. Those are coming from the federal government, Mr. Gorski.
So title.
It's federal funds that pass through the state.
Right, so all these new positions now once, and these are ongoing salaries that the federal government will continue to pay after this year and forward.
But we don't know if it'll be for next year. This is just these positions. If they're title positions, they are only for one year. They are not an ongoing position.
And we don't know yet. We don't know yet.
We won't know about next year yet. So these are just for this year.
So if, so these are new full-time positions?
For, yes, with regard to the after-school support. These are not full-time positions. These are after-school support positions.
Okay, so in that case, and employees are aware that if the, if we no longer have those funds, we cannot pursue that. Okay.
Yes, you are correct. And we've had positions in the past, power professionals, where we've utilized title funds and it's the exact same thing. It's a one-year position. It's a one-year stuff, and there's no guarantee in the future.
And and just, you know, on a average basis, do they generally continue for more than one year?
In the past, for the power professional position for the title fund that we've used, yes, they have.
Okay, I hope so. Thank you.
Just for clarity, we have the motion moved and seconded, but I want to make sure any board member has any questions that they get a chance to ask them.
I, I. Miss Ryback, it's Kathy.
Yes, go ahead.
I just have a statement. First, I want to congratulate all those who are retiring, retiring and wish them well. I've known most of them for a long time and I, and I, you know, it's sad to leave, see people go, but retirement is is good. And then I want to say about six and a half years ago, Mr. Gorski came to me as board president because the board wanted to do an RFP for a new law firm. And then I said to him, do we have to hire a law firm? And he looked at me like I was crazy and he said, well, what are you thinking? And I said, we have to have, we have to hire Mary Smith as our personal in-district attorney. And the board agreed and we did that. And it's been probably one of the best decisions we've ever made as a board. She's the epitome of what you want in an excellent attorney. And I really can't say, there's so many good things about her that I can't even start to to go into it. But it's been a pleasure. I've worked with her really hard over the last few days, as I know, the last few years, as I know Steve has. And it's been a pleasure to work with her. And I've learned so much about the law through her. And I know this district is really going to miss her very much. And I hope that whatever they do in the future, that it's it's not going to be an easy decision or easy to replace Mary. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please call out if you have something. Okay, I guess, Mr. Gorski, we can vote.
Yes, sir. Personnel items A through BG under superintendent's report. Mr. Polari.
Yes.
Mr. Ratsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole Poniewicz.
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Ms. Segal.
Yes.
Mr. Mayo.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
And Mr. Ryback. Mr. Board President, Personnel Items A through BG has passed.
Thank you.
Okay, and it's recommended that the board approve Board Action Items A through K.
Do I have a second on that? Or someone move it?
Move.
I couldn't hear him. Pete, did you move it?
Yeah.
Okay, and anyone seconded it?
Go ahead, Kathy.
Kathy. I seconded it. Okay, I'll second it.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Michelle, go ahead.
Dr. Alvin, same question as before on D, the title fund that that is that's coming from?
That one is coming from title two with his professional development funds.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's that's my question.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Mr. Gorski, you can vote.
Thank you. Board Action Items A through K moved by Mr. Tofano, seconded by Mrs. Cole Poniewicz. Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Ms. Segal.
Yes.
Mr. Polari.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Mr. Ratsky.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Mayo.
Yes.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Ms. Cole Poniewicz.
Yes.
And Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Board President, Board Action Items A through K has passed.
Very good.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Alvin. Mr. Gorski, our Business Administrator's report.
Thank you. Certainly, I would be remiss if I didn't comment on some of the retirements. Mr. Greg Byer, Mr. Ms. Deb Stapinski, I've worked with these individuals going back a long, long time. And certainly, I echo Mrs. Cole Poniewicz's comment on Mary Smith, the board attorney. Mary has always been a very straight shooter with this board of the highest ethics and has only provided guidance and advice commensurate with the law. And it's unfortunate and the loss will be felt for a while. So, Mr. Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through I be approved by consent roll call.
Someone move that?
Who's second?
Paul's second. Okay, any questions or comments? In that case, we can vote.
Steve, Steve.
Yes.
Michelle.
Okay, Michelle, thank you for calling. You're not visible on my screen.
Okay, Mr. Gorski, if you please, letter I cafeteria plan. It was a voluminous plan and I just, can can you bring in some information about it, please?
Certainly, we talked about this at a recent Finance Committee meeting. And it was reported back to the full board. There's a new requirement that the district offer a transportation flex spending plan. A commuter, it's called commuter flex spending plan. So this is a reapproval of all of this flex spending plans that we have that take pre-tax money out of employees' paychecks for the purposes of childcare, medical expense, and now certain eligible transportation expenses. The fees associated with this are minimal and are provided in the contract.
Okay, okay, I'm satisfied with that. Why is it called the cafeteria plan, though? I think that's what threw me.
Okay, that's a good question. It's called the cafeteria plan simply because employees can select like you would with a tray going through the cafeteria line, different options for flex spending.
Okay, because I do remember the discussion of the plan itself when we talked about it, but I didn't realize it was called cafeteria plan. So that's what was confusing. Thank you for the.
For the record, Michelle, I went through the same exact exercise because that's just an odd name for that.
Well, especially since we have a cafeteria and we have, you know, a plan for that. So yes, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Any other board member have a question or comment? Oh, I don't hear anybody. So in that case, we can vote, Mr. Gorski.
Mr. Ratsky.
Oh, Mr. Ratsky, you have a question?
No, I get. I vote yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayo.
Yes.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Polari.
Yes.
Ms. Segal. Ms. Segal.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole Poniewicz.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Board President, Board Action Items A through I has passed unanimously. That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, now I can have my report. First of all, I'd like to start out by wishing everyone a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving and Diwali. Let's keep it safe, happy and healthy for everyone. Secondly, the letter I intend to read, a little background. When I read the first letter, I know there were some questions from the board. I think, Ms. Arminio, if I'm not mistaken, you had brought it up. And it was also, the sentiment was also, I think, agreed upon by the rest of the board that while the first letter was kind of so off the professional, any follow-up letter would be a little sterner. So that's what I attempted to do because that was the feeling that the board wanted. So let me allow me to read this. This past October 13th, this goes to the four developers. I sent you a letter noting the serious financial problems in our school district, to a great extent attributed to the large influx of new students. These students and many more are coming from developments you have and are currently building. As I have informed you previously, our state aid per pupil is $873, which is vastly insufficient. Many of our buildings are in need of expensive repairs and one in need of replacement. Two prior referenda have been defeated by the public who are heavily taxed. In my letter, I asked for voluntary assistance from you as you are, as you are heavily invested in Monroe and clearly going to make a large profit here. Leaving this community, school system, in a state of financial need to a great extent caused by your projects and the new students they generate, without offering assistance is, in my opinion, damaging to your brand as well as hurtful to this community and the students it serves. To be truthful, I hope to receive a response from you, but not receiving any is insulting. I hope it is just an oversight and that you will reach out to us and allow us an opportunity to speak with you and show you the realities of our plight. I leave you hoping to be able to call you partner and friend of the Monroe Township Schools. Sincerely, Stephen Ryback. Having read that, I'd like to make the following motion. I move to have the follow-up letter to the developers approved by the board and authorize the board secretary business administrator to transmit a copy to Lennar, Hobnanian, JSM and Toll Brothers. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Steve, I have a question.
Is that you, Ken?
Yes, yes. And while I appreciate the effort, I don't think it's going to go anywhere. I, you know, honestly, I think we're wasting our time. I think it was very disappointing to see the builders or the builders' representatives donating to the board vice president and her team. I think that the mayor not wanting to join in and sign any letter is disappointing. I think that the mayor sitting in on the planning board, which he's a member of, and then voting for the same developments through an application where the person sitting there had also given to the mayor last year and to the board vice president this year tells us everything that we need to know. If anything, we should be talking about suing the town, suing the developers and maybe suing the mayor and our elected officials for accepting money from the developers because they've sold us out. And that's all I have to say. I'm voting no.
Okay, anyone else?
Steve, it's Andy, if I may. I agree that we need to continue to look and we cannot give up on any possibility of getting initial funding. That's what we owe to this community. But your wording in a couple of sentences, you said something about you take this personally insulting that they did not contact you. And immediately you also made an excuse that maybe it's just an oversight. Either we go down the path of being nice and try to get money or we go down the path of threatening them. I don't think you could do both. I feel that that's speaking from both sides of our mouth, in my honest opinion.
If you don't mind, let me just come in. It wasn't a threat. I felt that I should say it was insult. It is insulting. You get a letter from the president, any president of the Board of Education, he should respond. Not getting responses is, I think, very insulting. But on the other hand, I did give them an opening of saying maybe it was an oversight. It wasn't a threat. I gave them an opening to say maybe it was an oversight.
No, why give them an excuse is all I'm saying, Steve. Why give them an excuse?
Of course, I'd like, I'd like to be able to have them maybe change their mind. And this this sort of gives them a little way of reaching out if they're going to. Do I think they're going to? I have to agree, no, I don't think so, but it's worth a try. Like you, you say, you've been saying, I've been saying, you know, it's a letter. It's, 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 it's just, it's an attempt, it's a try. I don't know. We'll see where else we go after this, but it's a letter. They'll get it, they'll read it and they'll either trash it or they won't. So let's see. You know, but I don't, it wasn't a threat. It's not a threat.
No, not me. I don't mean it either. Maybe that was a wrong choice of words in terms of a threat. But, you know, giving them some sort of an incentive to say, if you donate a substantial amount, you know, we can dedicate that to you or something to that effect that really entices them.
Meeting with them, what I was asking for is a meeting and that's all I want. And then we can, you know, come in and talk about things like that. That's all I'm asking for is a meeting.
Okay.
And that's what I said in the first meeting and in the first letter and in this one as well. You know, anyone else? Thank you, Andy. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Gorski, can we have a vote on this motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chiarella. Chiarella, how do you vote on Mr. Ryback's motion?
No, I vote no.
Thank you. Ms. Segal.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
No.
Mr. Ratsky.
Everything's worth a try.
Take that as a yes, sir.
The yes, sorry, you missed that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Arminio.
I'll vote yes.
Mr. Mayo.
I'll vote yes.
Mr. Polari.
I would yes also.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
No.
Mrs. Cole Poniewicz.
Yes.
And Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Board President, the yeas have it, motion passes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes, Ms. Arminio.
I just have a sort of on the same note. I will probably, I've said that I will not be attending the Finance Committee meeting on December 2nd, primarily because I think I would like to attend the December 2nd Planning Board meeting. At that meeting, I think it's important for me as a citizen of Monroe who's been concerned about the master plan and how things have been planned in this community and it goes to the overdevelopment. But I just want to let the public know that on December 2nd at the Planning Board meeting, that's an unusual time for the Planning Board, but at 7 o'clock, they're going to be talking about environmental resource inventory. And I'm reading this from a letter I received from the municipal official, which I believe was done by the Environmental Commission over the past several years. It is a supplemental report to the master plan. I don't know where that noise is coming from. I hope people can hear me.
I hear a problem with talking before also, but you're coming over fine.
Okay, and then there's going to be an amendment to the affordable housing element. And that will, that's going to be an amendment that will have to be approved. But it will also, the two items will also have public hearings. So I don't. also the two items will also have public hearings. So I don't know if the public hearings will be on December 2nd, or they'll just be discussion. But action will be taken at that meeting. I think all of us who are concerned about the development should sign on to that meeting. So I just want to tell, you know, everyone, the reason why I won't be attending the Finance Committee meeting because I think this is important and will go to our future financial issues. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, finish my report. Now we can move on to other board business. Any board member? Please call out because I can't see everyone.
Steve, I have something.
Sure, Ken.
I just want to I just want to congratulate Mrs. Kirby, Ms. Belko, Ms. Belko and Ms. Beerman for their for their win. And welcome to the Board of Ed. I look forward to serving with them in January. And I also want to just wish our retirees a great safe and long retirement. And that's it.
Thank you. Any other board member?
Steve, this is Andy, if I may.
Sure.
Well, I have three items that I would like to bring up. First, let me just thank Mr. Bryers. I'm going to miss his voice at 7:30 in the evening every day on my answering machine when he calls to tell us that it's time to register for fall games. You know, I wish him all the best in his retirement. In terms of Mary Smith, I think she has been a great mentor for me. Every time I went to her, she diffused the situation much faster than anyone else. So I really appreciate the services that she provided and we will sorely sorely miss our services. And quite honestly, I think we should have an attorney sitting on the board meetings to make sure that we're conducting the business and staying on the topic of education, not going off all over the place to make a point and political statements. That would have been nice, but unfortunately, that's not what we do. One thing that I do want to say is that we did try to distribute some native plant seeds. Peter Tofano, the chair for the Buildings, Grounds and Transportation, kind of touched on that. We were actually able to give 250 kids from the school district the native seeds for them to plant. And once they take picture and send it back, they get five hours of community service. And like I said, 250 kids signed up for that. I think that's excellent. That kind of shows the civic engagement from our kids in the in the school districts. Most of them are high school. It's actually designed by the high school students to do that. So I want to give them a kudos on that. Just like Ms. Pilala kind of thanked everybody, I also want to give thanks during the upcoming Thanksgiving for Dr. Alwick, Dr. Lehman, Mr. Gorski, and countless other folks in the district. And more importantly, to all the teachers and the support staff in the district for doing what they have done. I heard this statement for the third time today, which I'd never heard before. We're building an airplane as we're flying. And Rupa said that, and I heard somebody else say that this morning. So I thought it was just a weird coincidence that I'd never heard this expression. I'm hearing it. And this COVID is just that, that, you know, we're flying as we're making the airplane. And you're doing a fantastic job. There'll be people who praise you for what you're doing, and there'll be always critics who will critique you. But I think down in our heart, we want to do what's the right thing for everyone. The last thing that I just want to share with something that I think is useful is we have a tremendous resource in this town in terms of professionals. You know, some of us are engineers, attorneys, lawyers, CPAs, and all sorts of different professions. If we can get somehow the juniors in our high school kind of have a, you know, we have what's called a coffee with the professional and just have a discussion to kind of guide them from a career perspective, that'll be really helpful for them. And definitely, you know, as an engineer, I could tell you that in our profession, we're looking for more and more youngsters to take on engineering, for example. And I'm sure the other board members can attest to their own professions as well. So if we can somehow facilitate that with the community involvement with our juniors before they start on college, that would be very helpful. I just want to bring those items to the board's attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plori. Anyone else?
Steve, I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Joe.
I just want to say congratulations to the four retirees, Mr. Byer, Ms. Basili, Ms. Tofanowski, Mr. Piccolo. Between the four of them, they have over 89 years of service to the children of this district. And I think that's phenomenal. And I thank them for their service. I would also wish Mary Smith the best of luck. She has been nothing but a rock in this district, and she will be very missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Ryback, it's Rupa.
No, Rupa, go ahead.
Hi, I wanted to again reiterate what everyone said. Congratulations to all the retirees. I know both my boys and Ms. Tofanowski, you will be greatly missed through the different clubs and different courses that they've taken through the years. Mr. Byer, you know, we've worked with you for many years also through curriculum committee and just being our athletic director. So congratulations to all the retirees. And I also want to congratulate the school district. Thank you, Dr. Lehman, Dr. Alvek, Mr. Gorski, and the rest of the school district. We're a great opening this week. I've only heard positive feedback from parents. So kudos to all of you for that. And I also wanted to congratulate Mr. Rutske. I attended the Middlesex County School Boards meeting, and he was recognized for becoming a certified board member. So I just want to share that with everyone. Congratulations, Mr. Rutske. I was so happy to be there and cheer you on. And my last update, or actually, I have one more thing. I do want to also thank Mary Smith. She really has been a phenomenal mentor to me as a new policy chair this year. She has taught me so much and has really opened my eyes to what school law is all about. And she's actually created a little bit more of an interest for me because I've been trying to attend every law forum I can because it is fascinating on how much is involved with school law. And I remember going to my governance, my first governance training, and one of the ladies that I met in there happened to be our old field rep from school boards. And the first thing when I said I was from Monroe, she said, oh, you're so lucky you have Mary Smith. So I just wanted to share that. And I do wish you the best in your future endeavors. And my last update is that I did attend the school board virtual convention, which was really put together. It was the first time that they've done it this way. And one of the unique things that they've offered to attendees this year is that you can view their sessions for up to a year. And some of the they had some excellent keynote speakers at this session. And some of the convention sessions they had this year were educating the whole child, 2020 school facilities, 21st century learning, technology cost savings, and COVID-19 leadership. And they had many smaller sessions throughout the two days that were done virtually. And there really were some great sessions that I attended. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just like, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, who's that?
It's Paul. Can I?
Okay, Paul.
First of all, thank you, Rupa. I appreciated you being there that night. That said, I wanted to, I know in public session before something came up and it comes up often and for whatever reason, there's a lot of confusion over how many Janesburg students come to Monroe High School and how the agreement works. And so let me just throw some quick numbers at you, let you know that the agreement is working. And to the point of what we're doing in Janesburg is we're paying for 275 students every year. And to put into context, for the 1819 school year, which we paid last year, right, everything's delayed, but that was 266 students. So we paid nine extra. For the 1920 school year, we're expected the number to come in around 250. So we'll be paying 25 extra students. For this current year, I believe the number is about 260 is actually coming into the high school. And again, we will be paying 275. So the reason why we budgeted, obviously, extra, nice steady constant 275, it works into our budget. We're we feel comfortable. We're always paying more, which helps pay down the indebtedness. So we're covering the annual expenses, but we're paying down the indebtedness the best we can. And every year is a little different based on what the actual high school tuition number comes in at. But the plan is working, the agreement's working. And within a couple of years, we hope that this will be all canceled out and we'll move forward on a one-to-one, year-to-year basis. So thank you. I just wanted to put that out there.
Well, thank you. I thank you for clarifying that. I was under the belief you paid for 270. So I appreciate the.
Yeah, 275 is even a little bit better.
That's that's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Steve?
Yes.
You may want to go last. I have one point that I forgot to mention that I want everybody on this call to know. I know that some people at least were disappointed that the legislative meeting was canceled. Like I said, it took me about three and a half months to talk to the schedulers, the legislators themselves, to line up all the stars to make that happen. I'm not going to give up. It's going to go either through some non-political, nonprofit organization, planning on somehow bringing it back to the Monroe Township because that's what we promised the residents of Monroe, that their voice needs to be heard in Monroe, in Trenton. So we'll continue to look at other options to conduct a meeting. That'll be a lot more open to the general public. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. I just really wanted to, I congratulated our retirees, certainly all of them. And I mentioned Mr. Byer and Mary Smith, two consummate professionals that were going to be missed, that are going to be missed dearly. Excuse me. I know we had a very good opening. And that's because of a lot of people's efforts, our central administration. I don't want to forget our principals, assistant principals, and of course, our teaching staff, paraprofessionals, bus drivers, everybody. It's really a district-wide effort, and it worked. And let's hope we can keep it going that way. And certainly the parents, their cooperation. I know it was frustrating for a lot of them. And I know they're glad to get their kids back to school. I'd love to, I'm sure you'll all agree with me, we'll end this pandemic as soon as possible and get things back to normal. It'd be great for the entire country. Okay, we can move on now to the public forum. Now, you're not limited to the agenda. I ask you speak just for four minutes and state your name and address, please. And remember the other items about the microphone and if you want video.
Mr. Board President, yes, Mr. Board President, we have Brian Fabiano. Brian, let me know if you want video. Also, if you had your hand up, anyone from the last forum, if you could kindly just lower it. That way I know that you do want to be spoke speak during the.
Right, no, Brian Fabiano, 19, Patricia Place. No need for the camera. I want to commend Ken for speaking up. I think you said it absolutely perfectly. You know, how can we look at these developers when they were the ones giving the contributions to the campaign? I think what we're missing here is everything in life is about a relationship. If Kathy, our VP, has a relationship with the engineers that put thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars into her campaign, why isn't she making a phone call to say, hey, our schools need some money. Why don't you divert some of that money over? Better yet, why don't we look at the campaign that took all that money from those engineers and perhaps give the money back to the to the engineers and ask them to donate that money to the district? So I'd say that, number one. Number two, I hear a lot about the board attorney. My recommendation to the board moving forward, whether it's this year or next year, is let's not let's not have personal recommendations when it comes to an attorney. Let's interview multiple attorneys and pick the best attorney that we don't have personal relationships with. That way, when the board turns over or the person they have a relationship with is no longer on the board, they don't decide to resign and move on. So that would be my my comment there. I have another comment about, again, we talk a lot about the reopening of the schools. And I'd like, again, to ask Dr. Alvek, what are the advantages of opening the school with alarming, well, the large numbers of kids that decided to stay fully remote? Were the lessons learned from the schools that were the early adopters that are throwing up the flag and saying, we need to go back to full remote? What are the advantages for us to be at the last minute still opening the schools? I'm not hearing a clear answer why we would take a risk, especially with the low numbers of kids going in. We talk about, you know, the all the things we're doing to social distance, you know, glass up, plexiglass here, there. But you can drive by the sports fields on any given day. You can see the players on the field, no masks, less than one foot apart. There's no there's no data out there that says it can't be transmitted within a foot apart, even being outside. And I'd like to understand what the school district is doing about that. The other thing about the whole, you know, threatening letters or sending, you know, hard letters to the builders, I really don't get it. You know, we sit here and talk about everything we're going to do to get the builders to, you know, to to give money. And Andy sits here and talks about, yeah, we need to do this, we need to do that. But Andy's on the planning board, and he's the one approving all of this new development. So I think it's a total conflict of interest to have a board member that's sitting on the board saying, we're going to we're going to go after these builders. And then the meeting next week in the planning board, he's saying, yeah, yeah, we're going to approve these. We're going to approve these developments. Yeah, sure. You want a curb here? You want a basketball court here? Yes, sir, we're going to prove it. I mean, I think it's time to make a decision. You want to be on the Board of Education? Or do you want to be on the planning board, Andy? I mean, it just doesn't make a lot of sense here. So, you know, that's that's my questions. Hope you got them all down. And, you know, the whole thing about Janesburg, 275, they pay for 275, but the real cost actually could be a lot more when we have to plan for bigger schools because we can't take the overcrowding.
One aspect I'd just like to clear up, and I'm not sure, you mentioned these engineering firms. They might be hired by the developers. I don't know if they're employed by the developers. And I don't, and I'm saying, I don't know. I question that. If somebody knows, that's fine. But I think it's the developers that we have to, if we can, reach out to and get to open their doors and have a conversation with. And it's worth a try. As far as the, you know, the the planning board, my knowledge of planning board is that they don't approve a development per se. They want they make sure that development is going according to specs and code. So I know they have some say as far as development, as far as the number of housing, of course, they're looking as far as code and the original specifications. I don't think they're the ones that actually approve a development or not. And I've been opposed to all these developments for years. I know myself, Mr. Chiarella, and Ms. Arminio have been for years very involved in fighting these developments. And but, you know, they're here and for whatever reason, it doesn't matter. They're this, they're here. And so stopping them was not obviously very successful. But I don't think the planning board is the one that actually approves it. And I'm saying, I don't think. Mr. Plori, if I'm wrong, correct me with that, please.
No, Steve, I think, you know, this is again, a political strike at people for doing a civic duty. You know, the way the applications come in is according to the master plan. And we have attempted to dismiss some of the applications when they're not in conformance. They go back to the courts and they get them approved and when they come back from the court.
Can I try to get, I'd really like to know why we have board members speaking during a public forum?
Yeah.
This is not, we don't do this. And when other board members have done this in the past, they get shot down. We need to follow protocol. Thank you.
Let me say, Ken, I apologize. You're right. I just wanted a clarification on that. So I do apologize. And you're right, we shouldn't be speaking on that. So you're correct. You're correct. And I'll end it. I'll end it with that. And I apologize, everyone. Okay. Is there any other response, Dr. Alvek?
Well, the question about the reopening of schools, one of the advantages, we know that they that remote instruction is not ideal for all students. So that was the goal was to get our students into school as quickly as we could. We waited for the filters. We got them in. We started the end of the market period, the end of the first market period. I hear what you're saying about the sports and our sports students are should be distancing as much as they can on the sports fields. So I'll look into that. But that's the advantage of bringing our students back. This is something that the the board, the community, wanted the students back at school, and this is what we move toward. And I agree that I'm concerned about the numbers. And again, we're watching the numbers.
Okay, I believe the time was up anyway. We have anyone else?
Board President, we have Prakash Parab. Prakash, just let me know if you need video. Thank you.
I'd be free to not have. Steve, thanks for your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
With my heart. The one thing I was, you know, one thing, it's very difficult for you to chair. My question was there and I was cut off after four minutes. Anyway, that question of sewer sampling and air sampling was not answered. Maybe my time is up, but if you respect my thing, you all will answer that later. Mary Smith, bye-bye. Your political legal advisor. Bye-bye, Mary Smith. I have seen you for last three and a half years. How you are advising the BOE on the main issues. Bye-bye. Thank you. Good riddance. And Mr. Gorski, if you're recommending her appointment, we are on the tape. That's not good. You don't influence how to.
Excuse me, Mr. Ryback, is he addressing the chair?
Yes, I'm addressing the chair. I'm addressing the chair.
Oh, stay. Talk to me.
Yeah. And. Yeah, and, uh, I, 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 I hit the right spot. I will go to the next thing. When I stood up and when Dr. Kozak was challenged and let go, I said, I'll fight and make sure you'll not win the next election. I have done it. And we need a change. I think it is time to rotate the committees. I thank all the committee members, chairs, what they're doing. It is the right time to rotate the committees, okay? That's my request. And legislators, my God, let, let the Board of Education invite the legislators, not the advocacy. Advocacy is fully political, and, uh, you know, it is time for a change. It's time for a change, and legislators, I know how to, and it is time for the advocacy to have public to join the committee meeting and speak out. Thank you very much, uh, Steve, and all the best for your retirement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Prakash. Anyone else in the public?
At this moment, Mr. Board President, I do not see anybody with their hand up.
Okay, I thank you. Then we can end the public forum, and we can move into our closed session, Rupa too. Okay, um, let me read this. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go with the closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law Chapter two-thirty-one of the Public Laws of nineteen-seventy-five, NJSA ten colon four dash six through ten colon four dash twenty-one, to discuss the following subjects. Discussion regarding memorandum of agreement in connection with the new collective negotiations agreement between the Board and the Monroe Township Education Association. Discussion regarding legal representation. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the, as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Uh, do I have a second? I have a motion, a motion to go to...
Second. All good.
Who's that, Ken?
Mr. Tofano.
Mr. Tofano seconded, okay. Um, all those in favor? I don't think we have any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, um...
Wait, Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Um, in, in your statement, I don't believe, um, you said that action may be, did you say action may be taken?
I said...
Okay. Yeah, make it clear to the public that there may be action taken on, on contract.
May be taken.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, I would say, um, we might be between a half hour and, let's say, forty, forty-five minutes on this. Okay? Everybody move into closed session. Question to read. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the previously submitted memorandum of agreement between the Board of Education and the Monroe Township Education Association for the period from July first, twenty-twenty through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, MOA. The Board President and the Business Administrative Board Secretary, as the attesting witness, are hereby authorized and directed to sign a collective negotiations agreement which incorporates the terms of the MOA. The Business Administrative Board Secretary is hereby further authorized and directed, uh, to take all necessary steps to implement this action by the Board of Education. Can I have somebody move this?
All moved.
Moved.
And move, second is who?
I, I beg your pardon, I missed the first and second.
Mr. Chiarella moved it, but I missed the second.
I'll second it.
Okay, two seconds. All right, um, any questions? Comments? All right, Mr. Gorski, we can vote.
This is Cole Ponowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Plori.
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo.
Yes.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Rutske.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Board President, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Um, if I may, I would just like to publicly thank our negotiations committee, Mrs. Arminio, Mrs. Siegel, our central administration, Christine Christie, for all their help and, and, and just being a, a great team. I also would like to, uh, thank the MTEA. Our negotiations, while certainly long, um, uh, over time, uh, there was, everybody was just so professional, and, um, uh, you know, it was really, uh, a very professional kind of experience, and, uh, I'd like to thank Beth Ann for, um, being a real person, and, um, you know, we were able to get things done together, the committee, and when we spoke on the phone, to clear things up as well. So thank you to everybody. And, uh, good luck to everybody also. Okay, now I can open this up. Anyone from the public have, have a statement about the closed session?
Mr. Ryback, I beg your pardon, did you have another resolution, uh, to extend the contract?
No. The only resolution...
The attorney.
I believe, I believe there was a resolution to extend, uh, the Porzio Law Firm through February twenty-eighth.
No, that's going to be in the December meeting. That's not going to be tonight.
I asked, I told that, and that's why, and she said, no, not the end of the December meeting. So, but thank you anyway. Better safe than sorry. All right.
Um, Mr. Ryback, can, can I make a motion to actually post that resolution this evening? I don't know why we wouldn't do it this evening. We're worried about timing. So I would make a resolution to extend...
Hold, is that possible?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to, um, ha, uh, have a resolution to extend the attorneys that we have already have under, I guess, contra, however you want to write it, for Dr. Alvik, um, just, you know, I, I don't know exactly the word you want to use, but yes, um, we need to extend our attorneys until the end of February.
Ms. Arminio, may I, may I help you with the wording with that?
Yes, please do.
Uh, it is recommended to the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education to extend the contract with the Porzio Law Firm under the same terms and conditions currently approved through February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
Fine, that's acceptable.
Need a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay. We need a first.
First and second.
Mrs. Arminio made the motion, so she's the first.
Right, that's why I seconded it.
Very good.
Mr. President, may I suggest that, uh, maybe add another statement that with an option to extend for another month?
That I accept that as an addendum, yes.
Okay. Does that, does, I have to be, uh...
Yes, we need a roll call.
Need a roll call in there?
Would you like me to take a roll call?
Yes, I would.
Mr. Rutske. Mr. Rutske, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Plori.
Yes.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Cole Ponowitz. This is Cole Ponowitz.
She's muted.
I'm muted, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Board President, uh, motion to extend the current contract in, on same terms and conditions hourly rates for the Porzio Farm through February twenty-eighth, with an option through March thirty-first has passed.
Okay, thank you all. All right, now I can go to the public. Um, Mr. Feldman, is anybody from the public there want to make a statement?
Yes, we do have one person at a time, Mr. Board President, Betty, uh, Betty, uh...
Go ahead, Betty. Betty Sabarito to Barrymore Drive. No, I don't need the video. I know it's late, I just wanted to say I'm pleased that you've reached an agreement, um, with the teachers, uh, teacher of CPAG. Uh, this evening I found out that one of our best special education autism teachers has given her notice, Jennifer Bittick, and she will be leaving Monroe. And I'm so saddened by this CPAG because she is a huge loss for our district and for our students. Ms. Jen started in Monroe in two thousand fourteen when she was hired for the pre-K self-contained class. Having come from many years at, um, Douglas School of Developmental Disabilities, I think she was exactly what this district needed. We had her, or my son had her, um, for pre-K for two years, then she moved up to kindergarten and then to first grade with him.